Six o'clock, the board went into non-public session at five thirty-two. So we're gonna start with item number four, reconstitution of the board. At this time, I'll take nominations for board chair.
I nominate Tim Dow.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Tim. You're out of the board chair, you can take it from here.
I'll take nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Delaney.
Those were made for Delaney, is there any other nominations? See no other nominations, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it, Delaney will be on vice chair again. One abstention?
Yeah.
Okay.
Abstained for the chair too as well, I'd like to go on record for that.
Okay, yep. One abstention, Colleen, do you have that?
I got it.
Thank you. You want to take motions for treasurer, for our nomination for treasurer?
I'll nominate Deb Brown.
Okay, nominated for Deb Brown, do I have any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstained.
Two abstentions? That'll be the reconstitution of the board, as the vote has been presented this evening by the Franklin School Board. Item number five is public participation. During public participation, I give no more than thirty minutes to this portion of my meeting. I ask that you try to keep your comments to a minimum of three minutes. You may address the school board with anything that you'd like. I would just ask that you state your name and what ward you're from. If we go over or come upon the thirty minutes, I do have a second public participation at the end of the evening under Agenda Item sixteen. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board this evening?
Good evening, I'm Allen Warren, I'm in Ward three. I just first wanted to thank you, the new members, well, all the members. And I wanted to thank you for your continued service, or your new service. It's a wonderful thing you're doing, my volunteering to serve. I want to thank the entire board and everybody here for allowing me to speak tonight. And I have one item I wanted to bring up. Well, thank you for putting the packet online. I wouldn't be up here with this next issue if I hadn't gotten the packet, which is, I went to click some of the cross-references that are linked in the policies, and I was not able to get to them. It takes me to a website that demands a user ID and a login. And as creative as I got, I wasn't able to get in and look at any of these cross-references. Mostly it's referencing other policies. I believe there are NHSBA policies that are online on their site, and they might well mirror the same policies on the school board's site, although I know not every school board policy is going to match the policy of the same designation on the NHSBA site. So just to point that out, I wasn't able to use those cross-references, and I might well be in need of instruction. If your IT person can call me and tell me just where I'm screwing up, that's fine too. So I appreciate that, and again, thanks for having that packet online.
Debbie Auger, Ward three, couple of questions. Do you have agendas for the public, you know, for meetings that we could have? And the second question, just curious, I have only been to a couple of school board meetings, but they never asked our name when we walked in. I'd like to know why. When we get up and speak, I get it, just like, you know, city council, you say your name and your ward. But why were we asked when we walked in?
To name?
Yeah.
Why I just asked? Oh, I just like to put the name, you could've said, no, I don't.
I'm just, is that a normal thing to ask? Because I don't think it was asked before.
I tried to ask the public when they come in, just so I have a record of who was in the room when things happened. And if you get up and speak, I already know who you are, and that kind of thing, but yeah. It's not something I've done before.
Okay, let's just, okay, thank you.
Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. I'll move on to Agenda Item six, this is Policy BCA. Every year in January, the school board members are required to review and sign off on Policy BCA, which is Staff Ethics. So the superintendent will be bringing that around, so if you can just read it and then sign off on it, and just forward it back to me. I just need the last page of BCA, that's it. Alright, so I've received all the copies back, just for, so the people know, this policy is signed off by each school board member. I didn't sign it as chair of the board, and it's witnessed by the superintendent of the schools. And then it goes into a file that is kept secured in the superintendent's office. Alright, that'll close Agenda Item six, we'll move on to Agenda Item seven. Agenda Item seven is your assignments of the Franklin School Board Committee by person, or excuse me, by chairperson. If you have any questions on where you've been assigned, just see me after the meeting. There'll be a copy that will go up to the city also, so that they can put them on and know who our committees are. It'll also be put on our website. So if anybody needs to find who's on what committee, they're able to go onto our website and find committee assignments based upon them.
Can we have a?
Oh, the alternate.
Yeah, the alternate.
And he's gonna stay for NHSBA, Laurie is the alternate?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so Laurie Cass will be the NHSBA legislative alternate. And that's for the delegate assembly, which will be held in October. We require a delegate on, or an alternate on that, if for some reason Deb is unable to make it, we have an alternate. And due to my position on this board and NHSBA, I cannot sit on either one of those. Okay, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item eight. Agenda Item eight is our students, our school, tonight we have the elementary school. David Cole is with us tonight. Tara Cole. Tara Cole. And they're gonna talk about the Hour of Coding, and they got a video that they want to show us, so Dave and Tara, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Yeah, so I'm Dave Cole, I'm the technology director for district, so I work, spend time at Paul Smith School two days a week, two days a week here at the middle school, one day a week at the SAU and high school. Kara is the digital, or the library media specialist.
Library media specialist at Paul Smith Elementary School. We wanted to highlight some of the amazing things that the students are doing at the school. So we have a video that we'd like to share with you to show some of the coding that we've started doing with the students this year. We decided we wanted to participate in a worldwide event called the Hour of Code. And so about three weeks before the Hour of Code happened, we did probably three or four lessons with each of the classes, kindergarten through third grade. I taught them how to code. There's a platform on the Hour of Code website that highlights basically computer science fundamentals, and it starts right at kindergarten, where the kids learn how to start using block coding to manipulate things on the screen.
So I'll cue the video.
We decided that the kids could probably speak better than we can, so we wanted you to see what they were doing and how they were doing it. The excitement was palpable at the school during the day. We spent an entire day with the kids. Each grade level had one hour of a block where all kindergarteners were coding for an hour. Another hour was the first grade, another second, another third. Turned out that it was the day that the tree fell over in front of the high school. So one part that we did not get to highlight was that we did have plans for the high school to come over, certain computer science students to come over. So we're hoping that we're gonna be able to facilitate that next year.
That's a lot of code.
There's more.
So much.
I really like it.
What do you like about it?
I think it's really fun, and I'm really gonna love it.
It's really hard for adults.
What did you like about the Hour of Code?
I liked coding, because you can learn a lot.
What did you like about the Hour of Code today?
I liked having fun, and when I was having fun, I got to see my partners move and dance.
Did you think it was challenging?
Uh, no, little.
What did you think about Hour of Code today?
Um, it was really good.
It was good, what was your favorite part?
Um, probably just doing it.
Okay, did you think it was challenging?
Yes.
What did you do if you got to a hard part, a really challenging part? What was the second?
I just keep trying.
Good, good job. What did you like about the Hour of Code today?
Just good.
Okay, did you have five, what was your favorite part? What level did you get to?
So one of?
No, so I was just gonna say, Hour of Code is something that is, students participate in from over a hundred and fifty countries around the world. It's been going on for over a decade. And we had, this is the first time that we know of anyway, that our Paul Smith students from K through three had the opportunity to try coding. And judging from their reactions, and Kara and I were in every single classroom throughout the day, helping guide students and answering questions and trying to encourage teachers, pair as any staff members to dive and try themselves. As you saw, some of the adults found it much more challenging than the students did, who were just kind of right in naturally and, you know, giving it their best and having fun. We had some really high-level students who kind of surprised us, where the teachers were kind of blown away that the students didn't have a very high level of reading, like some of the kids really struggled with reading, but they were amazingly fluent in coding and using that language, because it just made sense to them.
A few things that can happen with coding. If you were here last year, you saw that I brought in some cardboard construction, and we had built some furniture. So one of the things that I'm hoping this will lead to is, I know this looks just like a box, but this is the beginning of a maze. And I've done this with students before, where they build a maze using their cardboard tools. And then we're hoping to get some of these Sphero robots, that we then use the coding to have the students be able to program the robots to go through mazes and things like that. So coding is one of the great things that's going on. The current project that we're working on is a sewing project. And the kids are all learning to hand sew. And this year, we're targeting buttons and learning how to sew buttons onto things. So this is our current project, lots of good things going on at the elementary school. So thank you for having us.
Anybody have any questions about the Hour of Code or anything else related?
Just Davey, Dave, I know how busy your and Kara's schedule is, to take the time to come up, go up with the kids and let them learn about the coding, what it's all about, is being reconnected up all the way. I know they enjoyed it, and I'd be up to it, speak to some of the kids at the end of December. And I know lots of other staff have seen this video, and have spoke highly of it. So thank you to both of you for going up there while you did.
We're hoping it inspires our middle schoolers to demand more as they go through. Now that they've had an exposure, even in kindergarten, by the time they come to middle school, they're not, they don't want just introduction, be able to differentiate for them and challenge them where they are, all the way through, you know, K-12. So this is a great chance to expose them at a young age. And we saw some kids that just have a real great knack for coding, just right out of the gates, and something that they really want to stick with, it really makes sense to them. So that's great to provide that opportunity for them. Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Alright, move on. I don't see our Franklin High School representative, Kayden Salero, with us this evening. So if she does come in, I'll go back to her, but right now, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item ten, which is the approval of our prior board minutes from December eighteenth, our public meeting, and our non-public, and on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three also. So I'll take a motion on both, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Both, do we want to do it separate?
Yeah, because we're gonna, on the non-public agenda.
Yep, so to approve the minutes from twelve eighteen, both the non-public and the public.
Okay, motion been made by Jack to approve both the public and non-public minutes for December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Liz, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions?
One, two.
Two abstentions, three abstentions? I did get you down for abstention, I heard you, thank you. I'd also like to, on the non-public, I make a motion that we seal the non-publics for December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second by Liz, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
One.
Two abstentions, Marie and Leanne are abstaining, the motion passes. I'll close, Agenda Item ten, we'll move on to Agenda Item eleven, which is our financial report, and I will turn it over to our business administrator, Jefferson.
Good evening, everybody. I've uploaded the financial statements to the board drive, and I hope you had an opportunity to review them. Since the last board meeting, we have spent and encumbered an additional forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Thirty thousand, nine sixty-one is for regular education, which was primarily due to filling a middle school teaching position. And there was an eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollar increase in special education, due an increase in physical and occupational therapy contracted services. The rest of the increase is spread out over the remaining parts of the budget. At this point, we have ninety-five point eight seven percent of our budget spent and covered at this time. The budget revenues since the last board meeting have increased by seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. This is related to interests accrued on our bank account, additional indirect costs posted for the administration of our grants, Medicaid reimbursement, athletic gate receipts, and Primex Insurance Premium Holiday for Unemployment Insurance, and the recording of food service revenue. I also wanted to share with the board, since we have some new board members, I put in a worksheet in the board folder showing the status of our ESER three grant, which is our final ESER grant that's available through September of twenty-four. This is a summary sheet that shows what we have currently budgeted, how much has been spent to date, and the balances of the grant for each individual activity. We have twenty-seven different activities currently. Current, there's quite a list of items, I don't know if anybody wants me to go through all of them. Tim, would you like me to go through all the activities that are on there?
Just if they have any questions, Jefferson?
Okay.
It is our, it is within our records on our website?
Yeah, it's all on the board packet too, so you can go right through it and look at it. If you have any particular questions on any particular activities, don't hesitate to reach out and let me know. The current amount of the ESER grant that is unbudgeted and unallegated right now is three hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. We have, will be adding teacher retention stipend, that was part of the negotiated collective bargaining agreement. As we get closer to the end of the year, I'm pulling off putting that activity in just to see how, what we anticipate for teachers that'll hopefully return for the next school year, and they have to be employed with us next September for us to, for them to be eligible for that retention stipend. When we negotiated the teacher contract, it was based off of ninety-five teachers. The total cost at that point was two hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. Each teacher would get two thousand dollars, and then there's associated costs specific to that related to social security, Medicare, and Hampshire Retirement System. And that's what brings that total up to two hundred and forty-one, eight fifty-one. I anticipate this actually will decrease though, once everything shakes out after this year, and who returns for next year. And that is the excitement that I have on that.
Anybody have any questions for Jefferson, go ahead, Delaney.
Is the new boiler for the high school budget wrapped into the HVAC?
Yes, it is, it's in the one towards the bottom there that says HVAC upgrades, FMS, PSS, and FHS. That amount is in that budget, is four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Good.
Yep.
Any other, go ahead, Jack.
The professional services for the high school, and that was special ed.
That's the unspent amount, we have to put the boiler.
Jack has a question.
What was that?
We're over the other professional services and special ed for the high school, we're over two hundred and five thousand. Is that gonna be offset, do you have a plan for that offset?
Are you talking within the general fund budget? Well, the offset right now is our balance of our budget at this point. Contracted services, special ed, special education is always kind of a very fluid item. A lot of it has to do with actual burn rate and so forth, of whether or not we're actually gonna fully expend all those. We typically will encumber the amount based on what a contract might say, but so many things happen during the year, like we've recognized some unintended, unanticipated out-of-district tuition and things of that nature too. And even though, because the whole special ed section of the budget right now is about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars over budget, if you include all the components, special education, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, all the pieces, special ed transportation, we are over budget on that. But it's, we just keep an eye on it through the year, and obviously looking at where our overall budget is, and whether we can cover that. If for some catastrophic situation, we would have to look at pulling some funds out of our capital reserve if we need to. But our intent is if we can, cover it through the general fund budget that we currently have of items that might not end up being unspent at the end of the year.
We have our capital reserve balances, are they in there, sorry?
I don't know specifically where they are, but I know we have a facilities one that's about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, and then the special education one is a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
Should we consider maybe adding some more case managers to the ESER two, to move it out of?
ESER three.
I mean, ESER three, to move it out of the shortfall?
We already have one in there, and right now, we only have three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars left in the budget to add anybody else to it, and that's gonna get eaten up a good chunk of it from the teacher retention stipend. Could be about two hundred and some odd thousand dollars, so we're only talking maybe a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars left. And we're going through our budget process right now too, so we need to look at that and see where our budget's going to be once we get to that point, and whether or not there are certain items in our proposed budget for next year that can be spent in the first three months of the next fiscal year of our budget.
Any other financial questions for Jefferson? Thank you, Jefferson.
Thank you.
We want to Agenda Item twelve, which is our committee report. I will start to my left with Delaney.
Thank you. On January third, we had an innovation and improvement committee meeting. Our main discussion points there were the school improvement plan updates. We got updates from each one of the schools on that. We continued our discussion on class rank, and probably going to deal with that with the new competency-based grading system, and we will be continuing that discussion, hoping to have a final plan by the end of the school year, so that it's ready going into the beginning of next school year. We discussed our strategic plan launch, which we all got our strategic plan booklets tonight, and I believe we'll have more discussion on that later. And we have our next Innovation and Improvement Committee meeting on February seventh at five o'clock at the SCU office. And our main topic at that meeting will be mid-year assessment results reviews.
Next meeting? You got it, okay. Alright, any questions for Delaney? And I'll go on to Deb.
Finance, we met on the January eleventh, and we reviewed a previous month's minutes, the reports that Jefferson's posted in the Drive for Everyone reconciliations. We reviewed special ed shortfall that he spoke about. We have our upcoming budget work session on February fifteenth, which is our next meeting at five o'clock, to begin that process on the finance committee level. Dan brought to us a high school science program that's in our Dan brought to us a high school science program that's in our board packet that we'll be talking about a little bit later. We also discussed transportation contract, which will also come after some more research is done by Dan and Jefferson. And we also were made aware of a literacy and mindfulness award that the Tanger Outlet is presenting, and Dan will mention that, or has mentioned that in his report. So our next meeting will be February 15th at 5:00.
Questions for Deb?
Deb, when did you say that the budget workshop was?
For, the finance committee is the 15th.
Oh, okay, because the board was on the board.
The board's on March 4th.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Deb? All right, thank you, Deb. As most of you know, the legislative down in Conket has started working on the next budget. Superintendent and I have both signed in on probably a half dozen or so bills, mainly dealing with adequacy in school lunches. It's not showing favorite, favorite towards it. The Medicaid Direct was defeated by one vote, which would have helped our students in the city. There is a couple of other bills that are currently going through. HB 1212 was heard today. But there's probably at least four or five of them on, free reduced hour lunch changing it to where either the state or federal government would pick up the cost. But right now, it's, it hasn't been looking favorable down in Conket. There is a bill, a federal bill in Washington DC that deals with WET that has not been approved yet through Washington DC, which could have effect on money being taken away from the kids federally. I did write a letter to all of our representatives, and sent that out to them last night, asking them to support this legislation. So we'll wait and see how that goes and whether I get a response back. I am meeting with the federal delegates on March. March 20th, through Zoom and in person, I will be speaking again on finding a program or funding through the federal government for free lunches for school kids across the United States. There's approximately about thirty million kids that go hungry, and the only meal they get sometimes is from schools. So I will be arguing with this again through Washington DC, so, but the Medicaid Direct would have had a big impact for us. So kids that are on Medicaid would have been able to automatically be put into this program, and it would have helped the law for kids to get their food, the food insecurities that we have, this would have been a huge program for us. But I will keep fighting down in Conket and talking to our legislators in Washington. But all the bills are online, there's about a thousand bills that have been introduced down in Conket this year. So NHSBA sends out a notice every week, so if you get any of the bills, there's, there's guidelines that you can go through to sign into a bill, whether you oppose it or, or in support it. Your view is your view, and that's fine. But they are there, so you have the opportunity to read the bills. All right, so I will keep up on that in Conket. I think some of them, when you spoke to a superintendent's meeting, or some of it's brought up at the superintendent's meetings too.
Oh, yeah, I go to a legislative update meeting next week. So I'll have more to share with that too.
Are there any other committee reports? All right, we'll move on. Go ahead, Jack.
Fifty.
Did I, or did I already give this?
You already gave it, last meeting.
Perfect.
We won't see you again until March. But thanks, Jack.
There you go.
All right, Agenda Item 13 is our new business. This is, this portion is conducted by the superintendent, so I will turn it over to our superintendent.
Okay, so in your packet is the proposed 24-25 school year calendar. This calendar is aligned as closely as possible with the Conia School District because of the Hewitt Technical Center. There's a law that states we have to be within, at least within ten days of their calendar, which this calendar is. There was not a lot of flexibility in this calendar because of the three elections. As you know, our schools, two of our schools now are voting sites, the middle school and the high school, as of tomorrow is a site as well. So the three in-service days for teachers are all election days, which made it pretty easy for us to schedule. This was shared with the Teachers Union as we need to, and we allowed feedback from them, they were very comfortable with this calendar. Start, start date is after Labor Day, once again, for children. Teachers come in before Labor Day to get ready. And the last day of school, without any snow days, would be June 19th, which is in a pretty good spot. So those are pretty much the highlights of the calendar, but I'll take any questions before I ask the board to approve it for next year.
Go ahead, Deb.
Will we be setting graduation date on this at the same time now?
Yeah, if you want to set graduation date, you could set it at June 13th, that, that Friday. You're allowed to do that by law, so even if we had ten snow days and had to push the calendar back, you could still keep it at June 13th. The law allows us to do that, now you don't have to wait. So you're able to do that.
I think we should, only because of families that might be traveling to, to graduation or surprise visits to graduations for our families, that we should set something, and I would make a recommendation for the 13th.
I have no problem with that at all.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Liz.
I have two, well, question and statement. The, my question is, the April vacation going into May seems unusual. I'm wondering why, why is it not the week before? Is it, it feels late?
That's the recommended one that we're going with. This went back and forth with the superintendents across the state. There was a lot of confusion around this, and then the DUE recommended ones was finally updated. So this is the correct one, even though it is a little bit later.
Okay.
So yeah, that, that actually held us up for a couple of months trying to get this straight, so, yeah. We all had the same double tape on that, Liz, but it is the correct one.
Do you know if Massachusetts is the week before?
Usually, yeah, yeah.
That's why, it's generally that.
Yeah.
It's always their fault.
It is.
Okay, and then I would like to propose a language amendment. I'd like to recommend that we change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. The update would help align us with other school districts like Nashua, Concord, Portsmouth, and also offer greater historical accuracy and representation for our students.
So we'll just make that change, we're not, we're not required to, you know, we're not required to do a motion on it if you want. The boards, if the board is good with it, we can just go forward with it, all right?
I have no problem with that.
Everybody good with that, changing Liz's recommendation? All right, so we just make that correction.
Indigenous Peoples' Day. No apostrophes, anyway.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion on approving the 24-25 school calendar.
I'm making a motion to approve the 24-25 school calendar as amended with the changes.
Okay, with the changes to include the graduation of June 13th, Jack?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Motion been made by Jack to approve the 24-25 school calendar with the changes recommended by the board, seconded by Deb. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, as you know, at the high school, we only have one science teacher for the entire school this year because of the teacher shortage. So we have been searching for alternatives, we have successfully going to have a chemistry class at Lakes Region that starts next week. So we'll be using the vans to bring kids over to Lakes Region on Tuesdays and Thursdays for a class day, putting together for us to teach chemistry, so that was good news. We have also contracted, or want to contract with Uncharted Tutoring, who will do a one, nine-week session of physical science that we want to use for kids that are at risk who haven't got their physical science credit yet. And we also want, want them to do a nine-week biology course on the Tuesday, Thursday block as well to help with that shortage. So that's going to cost us about eighteen thousand dollars, it's ESER-eligible. So we want to use ESER funds to have these two courses for our kids, and wanting to inform the board that that's my intention. I did talk to the finance committee about this, so that's what we'd like to see moving forward.
Yep, go ahead, Liz, go ahead.
Is, so reading that the class size, the maximum is fifteen students, I know we, I, is that going to cover what we need?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dan on that? All right, and that'll start when, Dan?
Starts next Tuesday. They're good to go.
So that's a, just so the board knows, that's a contracted service, so that's within the purview of the superintendent to just inform the board that they have this contracted service, and as long as it's not an issue or a problem, it moves forward.
Okay, next up, middle school woodshop donation, so the Guild of New Hampshire Woodworkers has donated twelve hundred dollars worth of money and equipment to the middle school woodshop. So we got two hundred and forty dollars plus four nice saws from them, scroll saws. So I just need the board to approve that donation.
Put the motion on to approve the donation by Gilder?
Oh, the Woodworkers Guild of New Hampshire.
So we need a motion on that to accept the donation, so moved by Delaney, do I have a second? Second by Liz, any discussion?
What was the total amount of the donation?
Twenty-two.
Cash was twenty.
Sorry, two thousand two hundred and five dollars, I had the wrong amount.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. Okay, next up, I would like to nominate Nicholas Mutapian as seventh grade social studies teacher.
I make motion to nominate Nicholas Mutapian.
Deb's made the motion to nominate the, as presented, do I have a second? Second by Jane, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, I have the Portrait of a Graduate Trip to Springfield, Massachusetts. We will be going to Springfield, Massachusetts for the convening of Portrait of a Graduate. That involves students, teachers, and parents for that one, Carissa, no parents for that first one. But because it's out of state and overnight stays, I need the board to approve that trip.
Need someone to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Portrait of a Graduate Trip to Springfield, Massachusetts on March 18th through March 28th.
Motion been made, do I have a second? Second by Leanne, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes.
Thank you. I have a second, Portrait of a Graduate Trip, that is later on that month, starting on the 26th of March. That is in Connecticut, Manchester, Connecticut, that involves staff members and students and parents, twelve of us all together that will be going to Manchester, Connecticut to do some school visitations. And once again, because it's out of state and overnight and students are involved, I need the board to approve the trip.
So you need a motion on that?
I make a motion that we approve the Portrait of a Graduate Trip to Manchester, Connecticut from Tuesday, 3/26 through 3/29.
Motion been made by Leanne to approve the Portrait of a Graduate Trip to Manchester, Connecticut, do I have a second? Who's second? Thank you, Laurie, second by Laurie, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Copy abstaining.
Deb and Cody? Open by Deb.
All right, and then just the last quick update, the funding resolution that the board passed that had been generated out of I-2 in the finance committee, I did send that out to our representatives at center, and have also spoken with the executive director of the Superintendents Association, and forwarded it to him as well, and will be working with him to have conversations with, with all of the statewide superintendents to see if we can get more districts to move forward with that resolution like we did here in Franklin. So that, that piece is moving forward, just to let everybody know. And that is all I have tonight.
All right, any questions for the superintendent? Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 14. This is our policy, tonight we have second reading and adoption of the policies. Hopefully, all the board members from when we did first reading have gone over this and read the policy, and if you have any questions, this is your opportunity to ask before we have second reading and approval. And this is, this, for second reading, it's policy EHB, which is our Data Governance and Security. We did have Robyn come in and speak to us on that. GBCD, Background Investigation and Criminal History Records Check. IKL, Academic Honesty and Integrity. JCA, Change of Class or School or Assignment Best Interest and Manifest Hardship. JKAA, Use of Restraints and Seclusion. And KCD, Public Gifts Donations. Go ahead, Liz.
Policy JCA, the title of the policy itself, there's a typo, it says Change of Class of School, so we could amend that.
You got that, Colleen?
Yes.
I think, I think the rest of the title matches, but just making sure that the title.
JCA.
Yes, JCA.
So we'll make that correction on that.
I read it, I was going.
Go ahead, go ahead, Deb.
Policy KCD, Public Gifts Donations.
KCD?
Yeah, KCD. I would like to make a recommendation to change the twenty-five hundred dollar to five thousand, and that the superintendent would be authorized to accept up to that amount and just put it in his report of such.
So you're, you're making a motion to amend JCD to increase it from twenty-five hundred to five thousand?
Right, five thousand or less.
Okay, five thousand or less?
Or less.
Okay. Do I have a second?
And then anything in excess of five thousand would come to the board.
Okay.
KCD.
KCD, yeah, yeah. Second by Liz. All right, so we're going to, in, any discussion on the amendment? Change it from twenty-five to five thousand?
In two places.
Or less, there's two places. Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the amendment passes. Colleen, do you have that amendment? Okay. Are there any other questions or changes that need to be made? All right, so now what I need is to take a, a motion on these policies for second reading and approval as amended.
I make a motion to approve EHAB, GBCD, IKL, JCA, JKAA, KCD as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jack. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. All right, we go on to agenda item 15, which is late items. I just have one late item. I'd like the board members to think about. There's been some scheduling conflicts with our Monday meetings. Where a couple of board members, because of their responsibilities of not being able to be here for a meeting. And there's been other conflicts that have come up on the third Monday. So I'd like the board members to look at their scheduling and tell me if at the next meeting in February, if there's a day of the week that works better for you guys to schedule a meeting. So I just want to make sure I can get as much, you know, my full nine-member board here, so. I know there's always going to be conflicts, I know there's always going to be family things that come up. I get it, I have family of my own, okay? But if we can come to a consensus and we can do this at the February meeting. I know there's been some discussion about maybe changing it to like the third or fourth Monday and like, or Thursdays in the month. So kind of, you know, look at your schedule, tell me what days work best for you. And we'll try to see if we can come to a consensus where the board can all come in agreeance and find a day that works for everybody. And that way there, you know, we can always have a full board here with as much as possible. So we can just look at those over the next month. We'll come back at a February meeting.
And I am the one that brought this board because, well, my job.
Jack's job sometimes stinks his, we gotta.
I'm executive secretary to another school board, so I'm at three meetings a month. And it seems to be falling on the Monday that I have this board meeting. So Thursdays really work well for me right now, so I propose that as one of the options, but.
And I know Jack, you know, Jack's a superintendent, as you all know, he's a superintendent for three schools in the Pembroke School District, you know, and. Jack wants to give a hundred percent to the board, I know he's always wanted to. So I mean, I just want to be able to accommodate everybody and try to help so we can get a full board here with every, every meeting, all right? So just look at it. If it doesn't work out, you know, I already looked under the city charter, doesn't say we have to have it on any certain day. I also looked under board policy, doesn't say we have to have it any special day, just says that we have to have it once a month. So I've covered those bases to make sure that we didn't need to have any changes, all right?
And our next meeting is on president's day?
Yes, school is in session here, so we will still be having it because it's not an off day for our administrators and everybody. So we still will be having it that day correctly, and, okay. All right, that's all the late items, Dan, do you have anything late to add?
Just two quick ones. One is, you just passed the policy that I don't have to do this anymore, but I'll just tell you. We did get the Tanger Outlet grant for $1,272 at the middle school for literacy. So I just wanted to share that. And then secondly, I wanted to thank Carissa for all the work on the strategic plan. And I know she might have something to say about launching of the strategic plan, she's been very helpful over the last few weeks getting this out there. So I don't know, Carissa, if you want to say something?
Of course she does.
I hope that you like it. We printed these out for you, so we only printed 26 copies for this board administrators and the city council. But everything else is online and digital. And as you know, it's a moving target, it's not a moving target, but there's moving parts to it. So that, you know, next year, there might be some pieces in the action plan that change, so it's a fluid document. We'll be wanting to print this one too. We have been releasing videos, students have been narrating the videos about each part of the plan and how it will all have a niche for value. It's the last movie on the screen. We're just, it's just a way to communicate and to go through all the pieces like that. I hope you like it.
Thank you.
That was the easy part, y'all, now the hard part is doing it.
It'll work out. Chrissy, do you just want to touch bases a little bit? We approved everything, just to give the board kind of an update of what these two Portrait of a Graduate meet trips are going to be for?
The Manchester trip is an additional grant that we got from Barr Foundation through Next Generation Learning Challenge. So last year, if you remember, a group went to California, this is the same piece. So we'll be getting some additional money just to cover travel and those kinds of things. But everything's paid for when we get there. We'll be looking at Manchester's senior stories. So their exit for graduation is that every senior shares, not a senior project, but a reflection of their time in Manchester schools. And so we're going to be listening to actual senior stories and talking with folks from around New England about how they're making a school change. That's one of the pieces exhibition that Franklin, in your strategic plan you'll see, is really interested in implementing. The other trip is Barr Foundation's spring convening for the Portrait of the Graduate cohort. This is the last year of that particular group of funding, so this is the last time we'll meet like that. And it's a student summit, so they're bringing all four students from every school that are in our cohort together. One fun thing is we're having dinner at the Basketball Hall of Fame one night. But we'll be looking at schools in Springfield, we're visiting five different schools. And then we'll come back in the afternoons and evenings and talk about like, what, if we believe this for Franklin, what do we need to change at Franklin in order to make that thing happen? So we're going to look at our core values, the strategic plan, the Portrait of a Graduate and have that conversation. That's, I think, they'll be fun. I did, I am meeting with Barr Foundation tomorrow, there's a group of us who are meeting who are part of the portrait work. Not tomorrow, Wednesday, sorry. And we're going to be debriefing the last four years and Barr is looking to see how they can support the school district in ways going forward. So it might not be big chunks of money, but it might be more site visits, it might be other opportunities to support the work, so it's not just hey, see you later. They really do want to see this whole district thrive.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item 50, or less, is it making any other late items?
No, late items, it's kind of like a recognition, I guess?
Yep, go ahead. Yeah, we did it, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to welcome Marie, Leanne, and Jane. Feel free to reach out to any of us, or if you have any questions about anything that's going on, if it's moving too fast, please don't hesitate to speak up. Because we're here to serve the people that we represent, so feel free to do so.
Thank you, Jack.
Welcome.
Welcome to all of you. Do you have any recognitions? We didn't have it on the agenda.
Yeah, we missed it somehow.
Yeah.
I do not have any recognitions this month.
Anybody else want to have any recognitions before we close? All right, all right, we'll move on to agenda item 16 then. This is my second public participation. Again, I give no more than 30 minutes to this session of my meeting. I ask that you try to keep your comments to three minutes. That you just state your name and what ward you live in. So if anybody would like to address the school board for our second public participation. All right, seeing none, I will close that portion of my meeting and I'll take a motion on the journey.
So moved.
So moved by Deb, second by, who said second? Delaney. All in favor, we're taking five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, thank you everybody, have a great.